Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May I please have your call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sinanian? Mayor Garpetian?
Here.
What's next?
Next is the flag salute led by Councilmember Najarian, followed by the invocation. Please rise.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. As Americans and people who live in the path of these historic and epic storms begin to piece their broken lives and homes back together, let us remember them this evening and in the coming weeks. As we turn to prayer for guidance and wisdom before this evening's meeting, let us also give thanks for our own good fortune and safety. This evening, we draw our inspiration from the words of the famous American social worker and activist Emily Bissell, who said, "Great thoughts speak only to the thoughtful mind, but great actions speak to all mankind." Let us try to be the authors and architects of great action imbued with kindness and charity towards those less fortunate than us. Let us give our time and our resources so our fellow men and women know that they are cared for and cared about and considered in our thoughts. For one day, it will be our turn to ask for their prayers and charity. We pray for peace all over the world, tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you. May I please have your report?
Agenda for the September 12th, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, September 8th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. And next?
Next item is agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, September 19th, 2017.
Ms. Beers?
Mayor Garpetian, members of the city council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. For the Glendale City Council meeting for the 19th to commence at 6:00 PM, we have one item under consent, Director of Library Arts and Culture. This is regarding the purchase of books and materials from different library vendors. Under action items, we have General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is regarding the California Water Fixed Project and Resolution of Support. City treasure, City of Glendale Investment Policy. Also, the city treasure, the annual review of the city portfolio. And lastly, we have Director of Community Development. This is a PSA for property agent for the Economic Development Department, or section, I should say. With that, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. And what's next, please?
Next item is consent calendar, including minutes. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay. Any questions for consent items? Or?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is city council and staff comments.
Comments? Councilmembers? No?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, it was our intention to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mr. Vito Cannelli, who passed away this past week. I'm gonna announce his passing, but request that we save the adjournment until we can get a fitting biography on him. He has done a lot of things, so I just want to raise that. And lastly, I want to inform the council that I will be in Armenia next week, so I will not be attending the September 19th meeting. I'll be attending a conference there and dedicating a park that my family has renovated in Yerevan.
So.
Good stuff. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. I have a couple of items. We have an emergency agenda item. This is introduced as an emergency item because the new law requires that within 10 days of emergency, a proclamation must be signed. So I'm gonna turn that to Mr. Garcia.
Sure.
If you can elaborate on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The emergency item before you is the report regarding the emergency declaration regarding the severe wildfire that commenced on September 2, 2017. And city manager in his role as Director of Emergency Services signed an emergency proclamation dated yesterday for the purposes of declaring the emergency, but also for the purpose of receiving both federal and state funding for recovery costs. And as, under the law, we were, the council is required to ratify that proclamation within 10 days. Because the proclamation was signed yesterday, I'm asking the council to, by two-thirds vote, to adopt, to add this matter to the agenda. And then if you want, Chief Fish can make a brief report if you'd like, but the materials are provided to you. So first, what we need is a motion to add this item onto the agenda on the grounds that it rose after the posting of the agenda, and there's a need to take immediate action.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Do we need Chief Fish to give a brief report?
You don't, only if you have questions.
Do you have any questions?
No. I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
And just so the record, there are two items. There's a resolution ratifying the proclamation, and there's a resolution to the Director of the State Office of Emergency Services requesting concurrence of a local emergency and designating the city manager as the city's authorized representative. Those are the, those are the two items.
Is that your motion?
I will move that item. Both items.
Second, both items.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes, thank you. And the next item that I have is, two weeks ago, Councilmember Sinanian proposed that the City of Glendale move to support the victims of Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma. We, as a city council, unanimously agreed and directed staff to create a website that will assist in the recovery efforts in Texas, Louisiana, and Florida. And we're happy to announce that the launch of our new page that directs residents to charities serving the affected areas. And anyone wishing to donate to the hurricane relief efforts can go to glandaleca.gov/hurricanerelief. So this will direct you to the right links if you want to make a donation. These are all the nonprofits that they have, the proper and vetted nonprofits that we can, we can help our brothers and sisters in Texas, Louisiana, and Florida. Thank you.
And thanks to staff for putting that together so quickly. It's really a very user-friendly website there. You can see the charities that receive the funding.
And actually, I think at the time, we didn't know that Irma was going to be what she turned out to be. So it was a good thing.
Okay. What's, what's next, please?
Next item on the agenda is community event announcements and three-minute public comment period.
Okay.
We have three cards submitted.
Yes. First speaker is Sean Bressel. Bressel, I'm sorry, Bressel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Garpetian, and members of council. I'm Sean Bressel, and I'm Executive Director of the Glendale Historical Society. I'm pleased to be before you tonight to announce two events that we have upcoming in the Historical Society. The first is on September 24th. It's our annual home tour. This year's theme is California Craftsman, Glendale's Vanishing Heritage. We're featuring five homes built between 1902 and 1915. There's some, just really beautiful houses, a 1902 transitional Victorian craftsman, 1911 house that was built from pre-bought plans that was, and that house was owned by Dora Verdugo of the Verdugo family that was so important in the early days of Glendale. We have a 1915 airplane bungalow craftsman, 1908, very unusual craftsman in the Casa Verdugo neighborhood, and a 1914 craftsman in, just outside of downtown Glendale. So it's a great mix of homes. The tickets are $30 for members and $40 for non-members, and you can purchase those tickets on our website, which is www.glandalehistorical.org. So I hope all the community comes out and takes the tour to see what a beautiful craftsman heritage we have in Glendale, because people often talk about Pasadena and their craftsman heritage, and people think Glendale, they think Spanish, and they think period revival, and they don't know that Glendale was once covered with all of these craftsman houses, and we keep losing them, and we need to, we need to recognize and celebrate them. And so that's what the Historical Society is doing this year. The second event is tomorrow night, and that's a lecture in conjunction with our home tour. It's called Glendale's Extraordinary Craftsman Heritage, and it's an illustrated presentation of various craftsman houses throughout the city. It's being presented by Arlene Vidor, who is on the Arts and Culture Commission, is a former chair and member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and a past president of the Glendale Historical Society. It will be at 7:00 PM in the, at Glendale Central Library, and it is free. And I should note that it is cosponsored by the City of Glendale's Library, Arts, and Culture Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Next speaker is Lindsay Nohis.
Hi. I'm actually here for just making my opinion known about having pot within, for sale within the Glendale city limits. I'm a parent and a resident of Glendale, and I would like to limit advertising and sales within our city to keep our city cleaner and safer for our children. My daughter goes to school here, and already I've walked through Brand Boulevard and had to walk through plumes of smoke with my daughter. And I think that allowing that into our city just encourages more of that same behavior. And I'd like to basically limit their exposure for the kids and for, I mean, we have a really nice community here. When I first moved here, you know, I was surprised about paying for the parking meter, and there was a lot of, a lot of things that I was like, oh, my gosh, it costs, it cost, it cost, it cost. And then I look at the city, and the city is a beautiful place. And, and we have a great city, and I think that bringing that into, into our neighborhoods and our communities, whether it's downtown or within our city limits, would be a mistake. And, and I don't want that for my child or anyone else's children.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Hughes.
Hello. My name's Dr. Greg Hughes. I live in Glendale. I have been and not at Glendale since 1984. I own a business on Brand and Dryden, and I live in Glendale. It's a wonderful community. I've watched it grow. I'm also here to speak out about the, the limit of marijuana in our town, particularly for our youth. Our youth is our future. They'll be sitting in these tables where you are sitting today. And marijuana has been well-known to be a gateway to other problems. My family, which I have six brothers and sisters, all of them are policemen except me, and I've watched them for 35 years. My dad's retired, and some of my brothers are retired, deal with drugs, the primary one being marijuana, which only will increase crime. Every state that has ever passed it to this date has an increasing crime rate. Glendale is a beautiful, family-oriented bedroom community, and I only hope that the council members and the mayor will take that into consideration. I love this town. It's a wonderful place to live, and I'd like to live here and have my granddaughter grow up. She's in high school at this point, and I have no hopes of her really not being exposed to it if it actually comes into our city. So that's my wish. I hope my voice is being heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We usually don't respond to the speakers, but just for the record, Glendale has a straight-out ban on sales and cultivation of marijuana at this time. What's the next item, please?
Under action items, at 8A is a fire chief regarding Fire Recruit Academy for fiscal year 2018. 8A1 is a resolution of appropriations to fund the firefighter recruitment and training academy.
So, chief?
I'll turn it right over to Chief Fish, talking about the next crop of Glendale firefighter paramedics. Chief?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it is on the, the back of the previous presentation that I did on overtime and staffing, that kind of, we're talking about staffing again. We need to run a recruit academy, and we want to run that recruit academy starting in October. We are looking at possibly six people. That is, I say possibly because we don't know. We are exhausting all of our lists, our eligibility lists, right now. So we're, we're working on trying to get it up to six people in this recruit academy. In this recruit academy, why do we run a recruit academy? It's really simple. We want to make sure that the people that are serving the citizens of Glendale and in our community are at a par of excellence, and that's what we have. We have that right now, and all your fire stations, all your firefighters, the men and women that run calls every single day are, in my opinion, excellent. And we need to continue that tradition. We need to continue to teach them how to recognize certain hazards within our districts, how to actually throw ladders and pull hose is really important, and they get many reps during the recruit academy to do that. The other thing that we have right now is the people that we are going to be sending will either have, they're, they're all gonna be paramedics, so there will be no cost to sending them to paramedic school. And if you remember, a few years ago, when we ratified the contract for the Glendale Firefighters Association, the cost of sending a firefighter to paramedic school back, back then was about $150,000 between the backfill tuition and the salary that we were paying the person to go to paramedic school. Looking forward, we started making a difference in reducing that cost by putting firefighter recruits through paramedic school. In this particular proposal, we are asking to send ambulance operators at even more reduced costs from the firefighter recruit. So we're looking at an opportunity to save quite a tremendous amount of money from the previous costs. We're looking at sending five ambulance operators through paramedic school. They will go through their precourse in November, which is a month long, and then they will start paramedic school in late December, which goes about till August or September of the following year. Ironically, I just went to recruit a paramedic graduation today, and I will say that they get outstanding care, outstanding teaching to, to give the care to the community that we expect here in Glendale. One of the big reasons why we're having a problem getting more than six people in this recruit academy is, quite honestly, it gets down to backgrounds. We have a background failure of up to 65% right now. We get people in the process, we get them through the process, through a written exam, an oral interview, we get them through, eventually get, get them to the background process, and they are just not passing the background process for a variety of reasons, of which lying is one of the big ones. So just being dishonest on the, on the questionnaire that we ask them questions, it's kind of a shame, but that's kind of the, the state of affairs right now in your public safety. It's not just in fire, it's also in police. We're seeing about a 65% failure rate in our backgrounds. And if you have any particular questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you now.
Any questions? From chief?
Just, I just have one.
Councilmember, you want?
Okay. So you have, you want sending six recruits and plus five param, five ambulance drivers? So this is for 11, or?
No, no.
Are they?
No, ma'am. It's, it's gonna be up to six recruits for a 13-week recruit academy, starting in October, ending in December. The people that are gonna go to paramedic school are AOs, are ambulance operators, and it's, it's part of the recruit academy process. So the five people that we send to paramedic school starting in January, or late December, are going to go to paramedic school with the idea that when they get out of paramedic school in 2019, in 2018, they're going to start a recruit academy in September or October, a year from now. So we're gonna have six, up to six fully-trained firefighters starting on the, in fire engines and fire trucks, starting in late December. That will, that's separate from the ambulance operators that are going to paramedic school. Does that make sense?
Yes. And didn't, you just had a graduation class, didn't you? You just, we just had two firefighters?
Yes, we had, we had, we had seven firefighters just graduate from paramedic school today, and they're joining the ranks of the men and women on the engines and trucks, which we're very happy, 'cause we love to have full, we like to be fully staffed as much as we possibly can be.
Were there two women included in that class?
There were two women in that class.
Three Armenians?
No, four Armenians.
Four Armenians?
Yes.
And what was the, the, is that four and three? No, two?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. We had a total graduation of 13 people. Six got out, and seven went to paramedic school. Six went to the fire engines and the fire trucks back in January. The other seven went to paramedic school. So we had a total of 13, four Armenians, two females, and they're all doing very well right now.
Okay, great. Shows our diversity in the workforce.
And we're working every, every day to make sure those diverse numbers are represented in our recruits. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Najarian?
So, hi, chief. That's what I, that was one of the things I wanted to touch on, and I was hoping that this class reflects the diversity of the community. And I'm not saying just, you know, Armenian-Americans. I hope we get Korean-Americans in, Filipino-Americans. We are a very diverse city, and the skills that those firefighters have in knowing to speak the language of a particular resident and some of the cultural issues certainly makes us a better fire department for all that. So just so I'm clear, that we're, we're putting these ambulance operators to paramedic school and paying, and we're paying them while they're going to school.
That's correct.
That's the point, as opposed to them already being firefighters and paying them the firefighter rate while they're in school.
That is correct.
So that's, that's how we're seeing those savings.
Absolutely. And it's, it's a significant savings. If you look on, on the report, just to send a recruit to paramedic school, we're paying a fully burdened recruit $57.27 an hour, where an ambulance operator fully burdened is $21.80, or, I'm sorry, $0.51 an hour. So there's a significant savings in, in the amount of money that we will be saving sending ambulance operators to paramedic school instead of recruits or firefighters.
And so let me just be clear. I want to make sure my comments aren't misconstrued. I want to make sure that we're hiring, we're promoting and enlisting the very best candidates that we can with an eye on cultural diversity.
Absolutely.
In that. So I'm not saying, you know, pass on a, a more qualified candidate solely for the sake of cultural diversity, but I want the very best. I know you've had a great history, chief. We've had great compliments on the department, on you. I ran into Supervisor Barker again. Oh, you've got the greatest police, chief. I don't know what's going on, chief. She's a big fan of yours.
I don't know either, sir.
So I applaud your efforts and that of the entire force again, and hopefully we'll welcome these new.
You mean the fire chief?
I'm sorry, fire chief.
It's only a matter of time before Chief Fish goes and absorbs all of the city departments.
That's right. He'll be the Uber, the Uber chief, super chief.
I'm good, sir. Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Any comments?
I have a question, chief.
Yes, sir.
As far as the background goes, because they go through the interviews and everything else, then why don't we do the background check first and see if they are really, is there a reason that, I'm sure there's a reason, I want to find out, and I want the public to know, why is it that we do the background check after all the interviews?
It is the most expensive portion of the testing process. It costs us approximately $1,200 per candidate to send them through a background process. So when you have 3,000 people lining up to take your test, the math is, I'm not that good at math, but I know it's a lot of money. So that's one of the reasons why we wait until we have the selected candidates through an oral interview, a physical agility test, and an oral interview, I'm sorry, a written test. Once those three have been completed, we've narrowed the field, and now we can start doing backgrounds on a potential pool of candidates that we want to hire.
Okay. And I want to, I want to thank you, chief, because whatever you promised, you delivered. No wonder Supervisor Barker is a big fan of us, we all are, because I remember when I got elected, we were talking about this issue of when a firefighter goes to a paramedic school, he or she will get paid while in school, and we have to replace him with another firefighter, which gets time and a half. And that just really adds up to become a huge boon for us. So I want to thank you. I think this is, this will save us a lot of money. Plus, we know who wants to be a firefighter, and when they start from the ambulance and they go to paramedic school, and they, they can go to the Fire Recruit Academy and, and become a firefighter at the end. So I think, I think we are all on the right path, and we want to thank you for, you know, delivering your promises and.
Yes, right.
Is this done on, you know, by design?
It's all God's timing.
Any, any more questions from, from the chief?
No. Good job.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Under hearings, and if you will indulge me, I'll read all of the addresses at once, so the presentations can be made as such. Under hearings, at 9A is Director of Community Development regarding 408 Ross Street, Glendale Register nomination. 9A1 is a resolution to list 408 Ross Street on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources and authorize a Mills Act contract between the owner and the city. 9B is Director of Community Development regarding 1235 North Louis Street, Glendale Register nomination. 9B1 is a resolution to list 1235 North Louis Street as Glendale Register of Historic Resources. C is the Director of Community Development, again, regarding 1524 Majestic Way, Glendale Register nomination. C1 is a resolution to list 1524 Majestic Way on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources and authorize a Mills Act contract between the owner and the city. D is the Director of Community Development regarding 1051 West Mountain Street, Glendale Register nomination. Resolution to list 1051 West Mountain Street on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources and authorize a Mills Act contract between the owner and the city. E is the Director of Community Development regarding 3193 Vista Del Mar Drive, Glendale Register nomination. E1 is a resolution to list 3193 Vista Del Mar Drive on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources and authorize a Mills Act contract between the owner and the city.
And, Mr. Mayor, even though the, all of them have been written to record, my recommendation is to handle each hearing one at a time.
At a time? Of course. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. So 9A, who's?
We will have our new planning assistant, Dee Pica Dollywall, come forward and first go through Ross, the Ross House, or the Beggs House on Ross Street, and then we'll go from there. That'll kick us off.
Okay. Rules are yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, council members. First, we have 408 Ross Street. This is a 1915 craftsman-style house located in the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District. It's undergone a few changes over the years, but it is very intact today. The first known owner of the property was Charles H. Beggs, who was originally from Missouri and worked in the railroad industry overseeing the expansion of the St. Louis and San Francisco railroad system. He lived in the house beginning in 1917 and moved it from 1107 North Louis Street to its current location in 1925. This picture shows the original location of the house and the new location, new location, which was not too far from the original site. Beggs and his wife built an apartment complex on the former site at 1107 North Louis Street. It's known as the Louise Dryden Apartments and is listed on the Glendale Register for its architecture. This picture on the right shows the house shortly after it was moved to its new location, and this photo was taken in 1925. The property retains a high degree of integrity due to its minimal alterations, and it looks very similar to the picture we just saw shortly after it was moved. Its character-defining features include its horizontal emphasis, a low-pitched cross-gabled roof with overhanging eaves, exposed rafter tails, decorative false beams. There's also an original sunroom at the northeast corner, and the original door is located under a deeply re-suched porch. The fenestration consists of one-over-one double-hung wood windows and wood casement windows. The rear facade features similar fenestration patterns, and there is also a garage that was built in 2001 to match the house. It's located at the end of the driveway adjacent to the house. So the commission found 408 Ross Street eligible under Criterion 3 as an excellent example of the craftsman style despite a few changes over the years. an excellent example of the craftsman style despite a few changes over the years. They also recommended two Mills Act conditions, the first being the replacement of two aluminum windows in the laundry room and one aluminum window in the east facade, um, and also the replacement of the vinyl garage door with a wood door. Thank you, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from the, from staff? If not, I have one card. I'd like to go to, uh, Sean Burcell, and then if you have questions, please, you understand, by, we'll ask you more questions.
Thank you, um, Mayor Garpetian and members of council. I'm Sean Burcell, and I'm, I'm speaking to you now on behalf of the Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee. We are a group of residents in the Casa Verdugo neighborhood where this house is located, and, uh, we've organized ourselves to support the creation of a historic district in Casa Verdugo from, uh, North Maryland Avenue to almost, uh, Jackson, from Stalker up to Maryland, approximately a hundred and twelve houses. We have some beautiful, beautiful houses in the, the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District, but this is really one of the most outstanding houses. I, I think you can see from those photos what a beautiful example of a craftsman house it is and how intact it is, just comparing how it looks today to the photograph that was taken of the house in nineteen twenty-five. Uh, it, it is, it is such an outstanding example that it's going to be featured in American Bungalow Magazine in its winter edition. So, so we in the Casa Verdugo neighborhood would encourage you, strongly encourage you to designate this house to the Glendale Register because we think it's a, it's a, one of the most, uh, beautiful and important houses in our neighborhood, and we'd be so proud to, to have this house in our neighborhood on the Glendale Register. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Okay. Questions, comments?
Just a comment that, uh, just judging, uh, from the photos and, uh, reading this report, it, it looks like a home that, or a house that's been well taken care of over the years. Even the garage addition, um, uh, the architectural design, uh, was beautifully done. With the replacement of that door, I think it'll be absolutely perfect. So I have no problem with, uh, approving this, this home for the, uh, registry.
Okay. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I do like this home, um, and I think what I like about it most of all is that it's relatively unaltered from its, its original condition. And I think that's, for me, that's an important factor, um, in issuing the Mills Act. But it is a beautiful home, and, uh, I really like the colors, too. Those, that sort of olive, uh, green, uh...
I just have a question. I don't know, from staff. How long the owner has this house? The, whoever owns the house, how long he has it now?
The current owner?
When current owner?
Yes.
Bought the house, when did he buy?
The current owner?
Yeah. We have that from the owner's mouth, about seven years.
Seven years? And what's the tax benefit to the owner?
Uh, there was, there won't be a tax benefit. It's not as, quite as high as if it was bought yesterday, but there'll be, and we can't predict. It's, it's pretty much up to the county assessor to make that determination, but there'll be some benefit. Probably a good one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um... Okay, yeah. I, I like this house as well because, as was mentioned, it's all intact and it's been well-kept. One thing I want to mention is because I've been talking about this issue of, uh, relocating some of the historic homes or the ones that are kind of contributors in some areas, instead of getting it demolished, you can relocate it in, in another location. So it will, it will be saved, and this is a perfect example. They moved this house from Louis Street to the current location and kept it intact, and they built another apartment building that became a historic property. So it's doable, and I want to, uh, remind everyone, uh, my colleagues and my city manager, that this idea of having a historic village or, uh, relocating some of the houses that may be demolished is, is a, is a must, uh, is an idea that we have to seriously look into. With that, I'm, I'm okay with this, uh, to, to approve this item as well, and, uh, yes, Mr. Zaga-Janian?
By the way, I like the house and I support it to become a historic. Okay. And before we take a vote, I want to close the public hearing because I didn't close it for...
Open and close. Mr. Mayor, it has to be open and close.
Open and close.
So just so we're clear, Mr. Mayor, when we make these motions, are we automatically adopting the, uh, the work plan that's submitted with the Mills Act?
Yes, sir. It's part of the, it's part of the approval.
That's all included. We don't need to go through and, and list that.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval on this item.
Nine A one.
Nine A one.
Vocal, please.
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item has already been read into the record, and, um, we are having some issues with the audio, uh, from our microphones, and some of the individuals in the rear of the chambers are indicating that it's difficult to hear us, so I would ask everyone on the dice to speak a little bit more.
I'm a soft-spoken person, so that's...
As soft-spoken as everyone is, we could just speak up a little louder while they work on the issue. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have twelve thirty-five North Louis Street, also known as Casa Verdugo. Please note, there is no Mills Act application for this property. This house was built in nineteen oh seven in the Mission Revival style and was designed by local architect Charles Shadick. This is a very important house given its role in early Glendale history, and it is also located in the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District. So the development of the Casa Verdugo neighborhood began in nineteen oh four with the extension of the Glendale Line north along Brand Boulevard to Mountain Street. Brand acquired a significant portion of land in the area that was originally part of the Rancho San Rafael land grant, and he worked with Henry Huntington, the owner of the Pacific Electric Railway, and they created the Glendale Line that went from downtown Los Angeles to Broadway in Glendale. In nineteen oh four, the line was extended a half mile north along Brand Boulevard to Mountain Street, and Leslie Brand and Henry Huntington recruited Piedade Yorba Sol, who was experienced in the restaurant industry, to operate a Spanish restaurant in the Sepulveda Adobe known as Casa Verdugo. The original restaurant is pictured on the top right. Due to increased transportation availability via the Glendale Line and Mrs. Sol's authentic dishes, Casa Verdugo became one of the first tourist attractions and drew in a growing population to Glendale. In nineteen ten, Mrs. Sol relocated her restaurant to her home at twelve thirty-five North Louis Street due to a lease dispute. Even upon relocation, it was an immediate success and continued to serve as a tourist attraction. She opened, um, the Casa Verdugo Restaurant in her house in nineteen ten, and she operated there from nineteen ten to nineteen twenty-one when the house was sold to the Baldwin Sisters. These historic postcards show how the house looks very similar to its appearance, to its appearance when it served as the restaurant despite a few alterations over the years, and it continues to serve as the centerpiece of the Casa Verdugo community today. Not only does this property have a rich history, it also exhibits a number of character-defining features as seen here, with its arcaded porch at the front facade, its mission parapets, and red clay talavizor roofs. We also have this courtyard area that serves as an indoor sitting area today and was also part of the restaurant, as shown in the postcard. And the rear features a garage and guesthouse built around the nineteen nineties. The commission found this property eligible under criterion one, two, and three. As one of the first successful Spanish restaurants in Southern California and an early tourist attraction in Glendale, the property has made contributions to the development of Glendale, the hospitality industry, and tourism. Therefore, the property meets criterion one for association with historic events. Mrs. Sol, who was the original occupant and operated the restaurant on the property in addition to six total restaurants, was a true pioneer in the restaurant industry. Her contributions helped create one of the first attractions in Glendale, subsequently contributing to population growth and the hospitality industry. And so the property also meets criterion two for association with significant persons. Finally, despite alterations made primarily to the rear, the house retains its key character-defining features and is an excellent example of the Mission Revival style. It also still recalls the atmosphere and environment of the property when it served as the Casa Verdugo Restaurant. Therefore, the commission also found the property to meet criterion three for its architecture. That's all, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Open the hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear that this is not a Mills, Mills Act contract issuance, that we're designating this as a Glendale...
Your mic's on.
Sorry.
This is not a Mills Act contract, but we're designating it to the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
That's, that's correct.
Is that correct?
There's no Mills Act application for this house. There's only a Glendale Register nomination.
And so how does a designation, what does a designation to the Glendale Register do to protect the integrity of the house for the future?
So even though there won't be a Mills Act contract for this house, the exterior of the house will still be protected by being listed on the Glendale Register, and we would regulate any changes made to the exterior, and we would make sure that any changes that would be proposed wouldn't compromise the integrity of the house.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, and I think, as you know, we've been through this before, it makes it a presumptive historic resource under CEQA, so any sort of changes would have to go through that rigorous process as well.
When, Councilmember Devine?
Well, I just, uh, and there are no conditions attached to this home, right?
There's no Mills Act contract, so no conditions.
That's right. Well, I understand.
Okay, I understand. Just Glendale Register, yes.
Well, we don't very often get homes that meet three of the criteria that are necessary for designation, so, uh, th- this one is, uh, a, a real jewel, I think, in our community and, and certainly deserves the, uh, designation of Historic, uh, the registry.
Okay. Mr. Zaga-Janian?
When we say the owner has not applied for a Mills Act contract, it, what it means? They can't ask for it at a later time?
I believe they can still act, ask for it at a later time.
So then, at this time, they didn't...
Yeah, they can. And it'll have to come back to the council.
Or a future owner could apply.
One at...
Sorry. Yeah, this, as Jay said, this owner or a future owner can then make the request, and then that will have to come back to the council for your consideration.
Okay. All right. Okay. I have, thank you. But, uh, can I?
Yes.
Can I briefly?
I actually like this house. I mean, this is, we have to preserve our, the historic house we have in Glendale. Probably we don't have enough, so maybe we have to look for them and bring into the fold and make them historic. This is one of the houses I really, I look at the pictures and I look at the house from a distance, and I like it.
Okay. I have one card.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor Garpetian and, and members of council. My name is Sean Burcell, and I'm, I'm now speaking on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society and the Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee. And I also, um, live at twelve thirteen North Maryland, uh, just around the corner from this house, and have long admired, uh, this house. Uh, before I, I talk about, uh, why this house should be on the Glendale Register, I just want to, uh, say thank you to the current owner, Deb Ann Orfola, who, um, has been a tremendous steward of this house. She loves this house. She opens it to the community, uh, for various community events, and, uh, and as I say, she's been a tremendous steward of this house, so, so thank you, Deb Ann, for, for your, your stewardship. We greatly appreciate it. Uh, and the Glendale Historical Society was, was honored when Ms. Orfola, um, asked us to help prepare the nomination for this property. Frankly, we cannot think of a property that's not currently on the Glendale Register that is more worthy of listing on the register than this house at twelve thirty-five North Louis, uh, the Casa Verdugo House. As, as, as Councilmember Devine noted, it's highly unusual. Usually you get a house that comes in with one criterion. Maybe it has two, and you say, that's pretty, pretty good. This has three, and it's, it absolutely meets all three. It's significant, uh, in the history of Glendale. It's significant because of the, uh, uh, ownership by Piedade Yorba Sol and her contributions to Glendale and the culinary history and the tourism in Southern California, and the house is, is architecturally significant. I'd also just add that it's also significant because this house and its predecessor, which was, um, in the twelve hundred block of North Maryland, the first Casa Verdugo Restaurant from nineteen oh five to nineteen ten, gave the neighborhood its name, and it was the catalyst for the creation of the neighborhood. Once this restaurant came in, people came up on the street cars. They ate at the restaurant, and they saw the property out, up there, and they said, well, this would be a great place to live. Well, it also happened that the people who owned the streetcar owned the land up there and were selling the lots, so that kind of played into it as well. But it, it gave rise to this community of Casa Verdugo, and that community of Casa Verdugo grew and grew, and it became one of the three major areas that came together to form the core of what we know of Glendale today, and that was the town of Glendale, Tropico, and Casa Verdugo. So the house is, is important, um, not only for those other reasons, but serving as a catalyst for the growth of, of Glendale, and it was incredibly significant for that. So I encourage you on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society and on behalf of the neighbors of this house who also would love to see this house on the Glendale Register, uh, please support the designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I'm going to close the public hearing, and, uh, is there a motion?
I'll move this item, this house.
Second. Vocal, please.
Councilmember Zaga-Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next, we have fifteen twenty-four Majestic Way. This is a very interesting house given its architectural style. It's designed in the Monterey Revival style, but also features some elements of the Colonial Revival and Hollywood Regency style, really making it a hybrid house. It was built in nineteen thirty-seven, and the first known owner of the property was Mr. Max Freeman, who worked in the seafood industry and lived there until nineteen forty-four. The house has a two-story volume and a vertical emphasis with a hip roof covering its two-story portion and a side gabled roof that covers the one-story wing. There's a large balcony that dominates the second story, and this is a common feature in the Monterey Revival style. It also incorporates some Colonial Revival elements, as I mentioned before, which are seen in its thin window and door surrounds, um, and the Hollywood Regency elements are seen in the shaped accent windows and the attenuated columns. The rear features a long veranda and the same flagstone material that we seen at the front facade. The fenestration patterns are also similar at this facade with divided light and single-light double-hung wood windows. There is also a pool house that's located at the rear that was built in nineteen fifty, and a carport that was added to the side of the garage at a later date. So the commission found this property eligible under criterion three as an eclectic variation of the Monterey Revival style. It has a unique presence in a neighborhood with mostly period revival architecture. The commission also recommended two Mills Act conditions be added to the contract, the first being the removal of the nonoriginal carport that's adjacent to the garage, and the replacement of the nonoriginal garage door with a new wood door appropriate to the style of the house. Thank you, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions? I'm going to open, open the public hearing, but for, in order to ask questions, we need to open the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. All right. I thought it was after, when we wanted to have the public speak. Okay, thank you. Do you know what is the FAR on, for this property? The floor area issue?
I actually don't know that.
You don't? Okay. Okay. Thank you. I don't have a, a card on this one. Any comments, questions? Yes. Mr. Agajanian?
I guess, it was just, Ms. Divine reminded me that I have been in this house before, so I have some concern with this house. I mean, the changes, there are changes, some significant changes, but still, I think it's a nice building, so I will support it, and with the modification or recommendation which has been written here.
Okay.
I think I'll support it. I mean, I think we're pushing the architectural significance with the, what did you call it, the eclectic Colonial Revival?
It's really, it's really a hybrid house. It's predominantly Monterey Revival, but it has elements of Hollywood Regency and Colonial Revival as well, so.
So, I won't be opposed to this. I don't, I don't love it as much as I do the first two homes that we saw.
Councilmember Divine?
Well, I'm in favor of approving this one as well with, with the changes. I'm trying to see the poolhouse, if you can go to that slide, and I don't, where is the location, I mean, I, is that a?
The poolhouse?
Chain link fence back there?
Yeah.
That was done in 1950, a chain?
I don't know if there's a chain link fence, but there, the poolhouse is located in the very back of the house, at the corner, and it's really not visible from the context of the front facade.
It's dark, you can't see.
The house is on a corner lot, so when you, when you turn the corner, you see the garage, just, you can see the edge of the poolhouse right next to the carport there.
Okay. You don't have this picture, then, that is in our report?
We?
The one that's before the backyard there?
Yeah, we might not, we don't put all the pictures in the slide.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, okay. No, I, I'll, I'll be in favor of approving this one, thank you.
Okay, is that carport part of this house, or for, it's part of the next-door house, next-door neighbor's house?
It's part of this house.
But they have to remove it?
That's one of the remove, they have to remove that.
Yeah, the condition calls for the removal of that carport.
Because I know that some of the commissioners had some concerns about this house, and they, they, they were hesitant even to move forward, so my thing is, I agree with Mr. Najarian, that sometimes we're really pushing the envelope of the design and the, the style of the house, and we need to be careful not to go over the board approving projects that are not as worthy as the others, so the historic ones will stand out. We don't want to just start making every, every house that is a little bit unique and historic, so we, I think for the, for the Historic Preservation Commission, it's important for them to know that, yes, our goal is to preserve every, every historic resource we have, but on the other hand, you don't want to just devalue the others because we approved too many of them.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and is there a motion? I'll move 9C1.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item has been read into the record as well.
Next, we have 1051 West Mountain Street. This is a Spanish Colonial Revival house that was built in 1933. The architect is unknown, but the builder is listed as the Hunt Brothers, who ran a construction company based out of Burbank. The first known owner of the house was businessman Mr. George Hathaway, who lived there until 1935. This house is also located in the North Cumberland Heights Historic District, to which it is a contributor. Some of the character-defining features we see at the front facade are a projecting one-story wing with an interesting picture window, red clay tile roof, gabled roof forms with multiple roof lines, an inset balcony with wood railing, and a wing wall adjacent to the house. We also see an entry porch at the front facade with shouldered arches, a port cochere with identical short, shouldered arches adjacent to the house, and we also see the original door with interesting metal strap hinges. So the commission found this property eligible under Criterion Three for its architecture, since the house retains the majority of its character-defining features. However, a number of windows, approximately 27, have been replaced. Since we know what the original windows look like, as seen in this picture up here on the top left, the commission felt it was appropriate to add a condition that called for the replacement of the nonoriginal windows, which are seen at the bottom right. The new windows are still wood windows, but they have a different muntin configuration, which is vertical rather than horizontal. And this picture shows an example of some of the replacements, windows that we see on the east facade facing the port cochere. So overall, the house does exhibit its key character-defining features of the Spanish Colonial Revival style, and it has interesting features such as this port cochere, the wing wall, the wood balcony, the shouldered arch openings, and board and baton shutters around most of the windows. And the commission found the property eligible for listing under Criterion Three. The windows are an important aspect of the house's integrity, and it can be returned through appropriate window replacements, so the commission has recommended a Mills Act condition, calling for the removal of nonoriginal windows and installation of new wood windows that match the extent of original windows. And the property owners are on board for replacing all of the windows.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Questions?
I have a question. When, when were the, the windows replaced? Were they this owner or a previous owner, or?
It was a previous owner, and there are no building permits for when the new windows were put in. They're not recent, I would say, they're still a little bit older, but we don't know the exact date.
Are they going to replace all of those?
Yes.
Any more questions?
I have a question. The railings on the balconies, are, are these original?
Railings on, oh, the wood balcony railing?
Right.
Yeah, that, that appears to be original, yeah.
They are original?
Yeah.
Because some of these things are, these things are, okay. No more questions?
No. You have a question?
No.
Thank you. Want to close the public hearing? And is there a motion?
Comment?
Comments?
Actually, on this one, I see this went through lots of changes, and that's significant also from the permits and the other documents which is in here, and the windows has been replaced, and I don't see, even it says in the staff's, staff report, a number of original windows has been, said here, has been changed. So I see a major change in this building, so I'm not that warm to this project.
Okay, Ms. Divine?
Well, I, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Agajanian, but I think as long as the owners now are willing to replace all of these windows, I know that doesn't come at a low cost, I think that will make a difference in the, in the appearance of the house, and I would, I would move to approve it.
Is there a motion?
Can be.
An expression of future intent?
I'll move it, I'll move it.
Can I ask one question before we, I'm going to reopen the public hearing, let me ask the, are there any other modifications down to the house besides the windows?
There is a small, what we believe to be an infill, at the back corner of the house, where a small kitchen has been put in. The stucco looks pretty distressed, and you can see kind of an outline, but it's relatively small and minor, and at the back of the house. I don't believe we have a picture of that, but it's in the staff report.
Okay, so?
It would be facing the backyard.
The condition is to replace all 27 windows, or all the windows that were replaced before, to the original one?
Approximately 27, yeah, whichever windows have been replaced previously before this owner, we would ask them to put in new wood windows that have the horizontal muntin configuration and true divided lights to match the style of the house better.
Okay, so, Mr. Agajanian, if they replace all the windows, would you be okay?
Now, there are lots of changes also, if you look at the permits they have pulled, I'm not that enthusiastic, and in the yard, there are changes, of course, so this is not the original house, if that's the basis which we have to decide. That's me.
Okay, and, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing again. What is the, what are the other changes to the house?
They have changed a few items in the yard, so this is not the original house.
Is the owner of the property here, any chance?
The owners are currently on vacation, so they are not here.
On vacation?
Yeah.
Well, let me, Mr. Mayor, let me just say, it, it is a beautiful house, however, you know, I don't think, especially in light of the, the modifications that were made, I don't see that the architectural significance raises it to that level of quality that we've been bestowing the Mills Acts onto, and, you know, is it a house that I would love to, to be a part of? Of course, it's a beautiful house, a contributor to the neighborhood, but, and I think we have to hold the Mills Act very special, because really, it's meant for the special homes of our community, and I just don't think it meets that level, in my opinion.
So, is there a motion to deny the, the application?
There is a motion right now, it's waiting for a second.
Okay, so there is no second for Ms. Divine's motion, that motion dies, and is there a new motion?
Do we need another motion to?
It's probably good, so if, if the council wants to deny it, to have a record, that it, that way there's finality to it in case the property owner needs to take further action.
I guess probably it's worth saying that if, if there are questions, you had raised the, the question, Mr. Mayor, there are questions that could be answered by the homeowner to satisfy whatever the concerns might be, you have the option of continuing the hearing until such time as the owners are present, because it'll be five years, I think, until they would be in a position to apply for Mills Act in the future. There is a period of time that they have to wait, I believe.
Well, I, I'd like to have more of an explanation on the changes that we're basing the denial on. What, what are the other changes besides the windows and that little corner that our, that staff mentioned?
My understanding is, is those are the changes, but to, to the mayor's question, it sounded as though he had questions for the owner, unfortunately, the owner could not be here, so council's within its rights to do really whatever you wish to do, however, if you thought that having those answers would help you come to consensus on, on support or even denial for that matter, then you may wish to hold it over and continue the hearing, or just proceed tonight, it's entirely your call, I just want to make sure that you knew of all the options.
Well, I, you know, I'll move to deny the resolution at 91.
Yes. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
No. Well, yes, yes to the, I'm sorry.
So your vote is a yes to deny?
Yes to deny.
Thank you. Divine?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item has been also read into the record.
Finally, we have 3193.
Before you start, should I open the public hearing here, or after I call a speaker, if there's a speaker, because it's getting a little bit?
You know, I mean?
Generally, open, I would open the public hearing at the start of the presentation of the item.
Okay.
So everything is on the record.
And you close it after everybody spoke and before we make a motion?
Uh, before, yes, that's correct.
And we don't get classes in this, by the way.
That's right.
Anyone out there is wondering.
Yes, that's right.
But we're working on that, we're working on the mayor's academy, hopefully.
We don't get paid on no overtime either, so. Public hearing is open, floor is all yours.
Thank you. Finally, we have 3193 Vista Del Mar Drive. This is a 1925 Spanish Colonial Revival house that was designed by architect Edward A. Hayes, who was based in Pasadena. This is a very interesting property with a variety of architectural details and elements that set it apart from other Spanish houses. This picture from the front facade really shows its interesting use of intersecting volumes, various roof lines, multiple roof types, and towers that playfully come together to create a very picturesque appearance. The house has also had very minimal changes over the years and is very intact. Taking a closer look at the front facade, we see an original wood-paneled door recessed under a one-story wing that has a side gabled roof. We also see an interesting projection at the front facade that has its own gabled surround. Some unique elements we see in this house are especially seen in the window details. The projection we just saw has a moorish arch in the volume behind it with a thin round window set within it. Two arched windows at the front are also surrounded by a decorative cast plaster molding in the shape of a rope. The fenestration in itself is interesting. This house has a mix of wood and metal windows, which is unique for a Spanish house, and all of the windows are a variety of shapes and sizes. The overview of the rear facade in the top left really emphasizes its asymmetrical appearance, which really speaks to the Spanish style. We also see multiple terraces located around the house, as seen in this bottom-right picture, or bottom-left picture, and then we also have a set of exterior stairs that lead between the terraces, and also there is an interesting wood bracket supporting the stairs. As mentioned before, very little has been changed on this house, except for a few window changeouts, which the commission found to be appropriate to the style of the house. These two pictures show a replacement window on the second story of the southwest corner. The stucco around the window is a bit distressed from the replacement, and then there is also a deteriorated wood window on the second story of the southwest corner. So the commission found this property to be an excellent example of the Spanish Colonial Revival style with minimal alterations. It has a variety of architectural details that set it apart from other houses, such as its moorish elements, multiple volumes, terraces, and stairs, so the property was found to be eligible for listing under Criterion Three. The commission did add conditions to the contract, calling for the replacement of the deteriorated wood window that we saw on the previous slide, and the repair and painting of the wood bracket that was supporting the exterior stairs between the terraces, and finally, the repair of the stucco patch around the window opening that we saw on the previous slide with the metal replacement window. Thank you, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Najarian? Do you have a problem with the addition of the wall and the gates that, that we see in the photographs?
At the front facade?
The front gate, I guess, and the side gate. I mean, what does that mean to you? Does that in any way?
So, I think?
Affect the, you know, the architectural significance?
It's not something that we would ask to be removed, but it is done in the style of the house as best as it possibly could be. I think we see a lot of houses that have some sort of landscaping or gate or wall added at the front for privacy reasons or whatever they might want to add in, so.
Wait, is that wall legal?
It wouldn't be today. You wouldn't do that today.
Uh-oh.
But at the time, did they give?
What's our position on those, the front yard walls?
It can be only 18 inches.
Wait, wait, say that again, if it's?
There, and it's old, and we're not sure, this, this, the owner added the metal kind of arch at the end of the way there. The wall that we know isn't?
Jay, if you can speak into the mic or turn it towards?
The wall that we know, the, the metal arch is a more recent addition, the low wall at the front, we're not sure of the history of that. There is a wall to the side that is definitely an addition by the owner, and it's kind of a short wall next to a patio. In terms of a historic wall that doesn't meet current code, it's considered a legal nonconforming condition, and as long as it isn't touched or removed, it can remain, even though it wouldn't meet, you know, our code today.
Is that our, is that our current, I know we went through this 10 years ago, it was a crazy time, but is that how we're handling these now, is that if it's existing?
I don't want to speak for all the nonconforming and/or illegal offenses that were surveyed through the city, and I'm not sure if this was in that survey. It's not, it's not uncommon for a hillside house like this, where there's a step down from the street level to the patio level, to have some sort of barrier to create a protection, so this, this wall, I can't say that it's original to the house, but it's appropriate to the house and it's typical for this kind of site condition.
Let me, let me just?
Answering, answering your question more?
I thought people had to tear down walls, that if someone said this is not conforming, and it, there was an enforcement issue, that they would have to remove it unless they could?
Not for something that would be legal nonconforming, so if it wasn't existent, I think of my own house, for example.
Before 1920, though, wasn't it? When was our?
It's a 1940 house that has a fence right on the property line, on the, right on the, the corner. By all rights today, you generally, without some kind of exception, would not allow that, that wall to be built, that fence to be put up, but it is, it, well, it doesn't meet code today, it is legal nonconforming, meaning as long as it isn't altered, it can stay in that condition going forward.
I think, and we had this discussion, it was, it was over like 12 years ago, and so there's, there's legal nonconforming, and then there's a class of, of fences and walls that were not legal nonconforming, but were not, were basically put into bans, and they've been in that, that position ever since, so this could be in that category, and then if they were built after a certain date, which one, this one probably was, and so if it was built after that 2005 council meeting, then I think then those were the ones that we enforced on. So that's sort of the, the range of, of options.
We don't know.
But we don't, I don't, I don't know, because I sit here.
Okay, let me, let me, let me just add to this a little bit. If I buy that house tomorrow, and two months later, my neighbor goes to the city and says, "This wall is illegal, cannot be there." I'm responsible for that wall, because I have to take it down, because if I don't have a permit for it, it's my responsibility, before I buy a house, to search the city records and find out if that wall has a, has a permit or not, so my neighbor can complain and make me take that wall down. They're legal nonconforming, same thing goes with the windows, that we have so many cases against people that those windows were windows were replaced way back when, and property is being sold, and then somebody complains, although there are 50 homes on the same street that windows were replaced, and only one complained against one house, and we go after them and tell them, "You need to, you're responsible." Maybe we don't force them to change them or what have you, but they are responsible for the property that they purchased. I'm not talking about the owners currently, right now, overall. That wall cannot be, I don't know, as, my understanding is, as far as I've seen in that last 15, 20 years, there is no such thing as legal nonconforming, but front walls, front property fences, when it's more than 18 inches. Again, if this property is sold, or another property that has a wall, or Mr., or try even your property, because we had that before, that we had people who had, ported shares in front of their, their properties, and they were removed because the fact that they were old didn't make them legal. So I think we need to be very careful as to, we cannot be selective and pick and choose the ones that, you know, I can say this is, I'm not saying we're doing that. So what, what I'm trying to say is, you know, we have to be careful, because we're walking a fine line, right?
I think the issue is, was it legal at the time of its construction? To ju, and then the code changes, and that's the, the genesis of the legal nonconforming standard or status.
I understand, but we don't know when that wall was built, and if that, the code was there at that time or not. And I can say, "Well, my property has been, you know, it's an old property, and the wall was there when they built it." So if there is no permit for it, because even the old times, I've, I've seen all of these, these plans, they had a one, eight and a half by 11 page, they show where the, where the house is gonna be and where the walls are gonna be, so.
And furthermore, conferring Mills Act benefit on that would prevent them from making any changes, if it were to come up to be a nonconforming.
I think, I think that is an issue, yeah.
Right. Once, once it's confirmed, we can't say, "Oops, that's a bad wall. Take the wall down."
Unless we were able to verify that it wasn't an original feature, it was built in-
But you can't give us that information at this point.
Not right now, yeah.
So maybe we're a little premature in this.
There's, there's also a provision that I think was discussed 12 years ago in the, in the fence issue, and, and is still relevant for a lot of our multifamily construction, front setbacks. If there's a significant drop-off, building and safety is going to require that there be some sort of barrier from one side to the other, and so we do allow railings and, and I think in some cases, lower walls to prevent that kind of hazard. I would say this is a situation like that.
Do you want to continue this one, to see if we have more information?
There's a number of steps down from the street to the patio there.
I would rather continue it to get clearer answers, because right now I'm a no on this, for that wall issue. That would be my suggestion, that we get a little more information, but I defer to my colleagues.
Councilmember-
Really baffled, because, Mr. Mayor, you are, you're expert in old cars, classic cars. I would say that. So, I mean, if this would be a car, I mean, if you replace few things, that you can't call that car a classic. Yeah. Historic house is like classic cars. I think historic house should be, signifies what it was when they built it, or very close, like 90, 95% close to what it was when they built it. And I don't see, on this house, there are lots of changes. I mean, continuance or not to continue or not to continue, I think this is going too far. I mean, if this is the basis, we change all the time and say, "This is historic, everything comes, it's historic," I'm, I don't know. Not worth for this one.
Again, again, I asked, what were the-
Even the wall is, I'm sorry.
What were the changes?
Even to replace the wall, I mean, I don't see the significance of this house, because it went through lots of changes.
If staff respectfully disagrees about the number of changes, there's really only a stucco patch and one deteriorated window that were conditions for the replacement, and then fixing, just repairing one historic element that has deteriorated. Just thinking about our Glendale Register program in general, and, and just the reality of houses that have been around since the 1920s, or perhaps even earlier, almost every property that we see coming forward for the Glendale Register has some level of change. It's very rare for something to be 95% intact. We look for that, we think it's wonderful when we find it. That's part of the reason we impose conditions on the Mills Act, when we have a few changes that we think are easily remedied to bring it back very close to its original appearance. We're very comfortable allowing that new material to come in to, to bring the whole house together again. But it would be a very high standard, which of course, council directs us to advise people that we are looking for that sort of house. It could limit the number of applications that we see and that you consider over the years.
Is the garage is original with the gate?
The garage is original. The, the iron work at the top of the garage was added by the current owner.
Garage doors is original?
Excuse me?
Garage doors.
The garage door doesn't look original, but it's in the style of the period. It's incredibly rare to have original garage doors these days, and the commission has been very vigilant about having garage doors replaced when we have these vinyl or aluminum doors. This one, they found to be appropriate.
Do we, did the commission have anything to say about that wall? Did they, I mean, we're, we are judging the house-
Yeah, the commission-
-for its historic relevance, but did they say anything about the wall?
Yeah, the commission didn't mention the wall. They did, we focused a little more on the wall that you can't see in this picture, but I think it's in your package. It's to the left when you're looking at this view. That was built by the current owner. It's kind of a freestanding wall that was to give privacy between the adjoining property. It's different than this. This wall's kind of in the historic style. The other one is kind of a garden feature, more or less.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the wall. I think the house is, is what we're looking at, and it's, uh-
Yeah, but the wall is blocking the entire house from the street.
My, my best guess is that if this isn't the historic wall, and if you do continue the hearing, we can look into that as much as possible, but we may come back saying, "We're not sure." That's always a possible outcome of this kind of thing. My best guess is there, there was some kind of wall there because of the drop, the grade change from the street, and it's very typical to have these kind of front courtyard features for Spanish colonial. Often, they're more or less on the same level. Here, because of the grade, we just have a change in some steps.
And, and aren't they most of the time higher than that? I mean, I've, I've seen some in that, that area, in the monastero area, that are, you, you can't even see the house. The wall is so high.
That's possible, but my sense is those are often not original walls. Historically, you didn't wall off the front of your house. That's more of a modern kind of safety and privacy concern.
Okay, I have one card. I think the owner is here. Sonia T.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Sonia Monteano. Thank you for listening to me on behalf of this house on Vista Del Mar. I understand your concerns about the wall. That was pre-existing, and I know I do not know the age of the wall, but there is a significant drop, so without a wall, it would be a danger. But, you know, you being on this board versus the preservation board, where they had an opportunity to tour the property and to see it in person, I have the blueprints to the house that can prove there have been no alterations. This house is intact. It is pristine. The one window that was replaced on the upper tower room was because someone had put a very large aluminum window, and I went by the blueprints, and I found a vintage window, went through the process of restoring it to put the exact same size window back in its original place. So I've been in this house six, seven years now, and I have been restoring it in its last detail, like you say, like a car. If anything, doorknob, if anything has been broken, it's been replaced exactly like the blueprints indicate that it should be. So after a very careful review by the preservation commission, it, it was voted unanimously to approve it because it is in pristine condition. So the fact, you know, that this wall is concerning to you as a homeowner and as a caretaker of this house, I really would like the future of the house to be preserved. There's a lot of things that are not to code. Stairs are different sizes, rails are low. Nothing of this 1924 house will comply with today's building code standards. It is almost like a Disneyland-type house, like a facade, sort of say. But I've do, you know, I'm doing everything in my power to preserve the architect's intention, and, you know, I believe that it, it meets the criteria number three for its architectural merit alone, and it does so better than many homes that have been previously approved on the registry. And I ask you to give it your most serious consideration. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have for this house on Vista Del Mar. Additionally, I would reiterate the fact that the house was built on the hill. The view from the street, very different from the view that you see from the backside of the street. It's a property that goes from street to street, and when you look at the house from the Arbolita side, looking up, it's, it's a palatial house. It looks like a fort. Incredible design, not to be overlooked by a wall that, yes, can come down. If you so, so deem it's illegal, and you want people to fall over a couple of feet, I mean, I'm here to answer your questions and to just, I'm just lobbying for the house, and I need your help.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Any questions from the...
I have a, I have a question from, from Jay, Mr. Platt. This house was built in 1923?
Mm-hmm.
And do we have, how many of, how many more houses do we have that are in the same architectural style and integrity?
From the 20s, or?
From the 20s.
Thousands? We have, we have a lot of Spanish col, we have one of the best colonial revival collections in, in the region, I would say. And this, this house, for us, when we experienced it, was very different from a lot of the other beautiful examples that we have.
In what aspect? Different, different how?
Different in the massing, different in having these flat roof surfaces and tiled roof surfaces. It's almost like a playground when you're walking, not only in the house, but outside. There are many different levels of terraces and stairways connecting them, a fountain on one of the landings of the stairways. The Moorish influence, we've seen on a few other Spanish houses, but it's not typical in Glendale or in anywhere else. And it's just the accumulation of kind of small details that add up to something, and I, I try never to use the word "unique," and I'm not going to use it right now, but the fact that I want to. So I, I think this is close to being a singular house, different than other properties that I've seen in the city.
Because we have, from 1920 to 1930, there were 7,411 houses built in Glendale. So I think we need to be, for all of us, a little careful as to which ones are being registered, which ones aren't, because within 7,400 houses, again, we want to pick and choose the best ones.
Just so council understands our internal process at the staff level, we receive calls regularly. "I'm interested in the Glendale Register. Do you think my house is eligible?" The vast majority of those, I give them the unfortunate news, "Beautiful house. I wish I could live there, but it doesn't look eligible." We still give them the option of coming forward. Recently, the commission has declined two houses in the last two hearings that we've had. That's something that, those don't make it to city council, so you don't know that they're actually looking at these very carefully and not just rubber stamping because it's pretty. So, and then, and then many, many more get kind of knocked off at staff level. So we recognize that not every house is going to be historic and that the Glendale Register has meaning, and I, I personally am very careful and of maintaining the quality as much as we can.
Do we know what's the square footage on this house?
I actually don't.
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred.
And your lot size?
Ninety-two hundred.
So for future, you know, information that comes to us, it will be helpful to have the size of the property, square footage of the house, as well as the, the lot size. It's, it's, I think for me, it's important to know.
Okay.
So, so am I hearing that in order to make this decision, we're considering the wall as far as historic designation?
I don't think you're required to. I think-
No.
I am.
No, but I'm just saying legally, you're not required to. I think Jay's, the opinion of staff is that the house, there's sufficient evidence to support the conclusion that the house by itself, with or without the wall qualifies legally. So it's, it's, you, you're weighing that evidence. You know, obviously you have, you know, Councilman Najarian, for example, it's a factor. Legally, it's not required to be.
Thank you.
Council, of course, can also-
But it's not precluded.
Add conditions.
It's not precluded. It's not required, but it's not precluded, so.
As I look at the report, it's, it's minimally discussed in there, so it's, but it is discussed, so it's within the discretion of council.
Okay.
And, and we have a unanimous decision by the historic preservation condition, so, you know, I like to put some weight in their decision as well, so. I, I-
Let me close the public hearing now, so we can, we can...
Okay.
Well, I guess you know where I stand on this one. I, I feel that, that the house deserves this designation regardless of the wall, and it's, uh, looks like a pretty extraordinary house, and it sounds like, you know, when I think of a caretaker for a house, that's, that's pretty special, so. And I think the integrity of the house will be maintained, so I, I would approve this, this designation.
Okay. No comments, motions?
I would, and clearly, the, Ms. Monteano is very committed to the home, and that's, that is wonderful. We, I wish, I wish half of the residents of Glendale were as concerned about maintaining the structural and character of homes as she is. But I think it's, I really, the problem is that we went through hell, and you guys don't know this. I was the one up here with these fences, and we were, people were coming crying about having to remove their fence, and their kids falling into the street, and coyotes eating their pets, and we were very, the community, not just council, but the community came down very strong, that they wanted to maintain the integrity of Glendale's front fence law, that there should be no fences in the front setback, the front yard setback. This is the context to my discussion on this home, to confer the Mills Act on this home without any further research, setting a very bad example. It's giving amnesty, perhaps, to those that have those front walls and can point to this house and say, "The Glendale City Council bestowed upon this house the highest honor that it can. Let's just kick this down the road. Let's get a little bit of research, and let's not vote on it at this time." That's my suggestion, because if I have to vote on it now, my vote's going to be no. If I get a little more information, it may very well change my mind. The house is a beautiful house. I think it's an example of integrity, and the architectural style is wonderful, but we've got, it's got a sore thumb, you know, sticking out, and we've got to resolve that in a proper way that does justice to what this council and this city has gone through 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and what we may end up going through again in the future. So let's tread softly on this, get a little more info, and make a decision that is the best decision that we can make, with as much information before us as possible.
I agree with Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian. I was in this hall in 2005, Chevy Chase Canyon Home, I think, Chevy Chase Canyon Homeowners Association were here every day, and I was reporting that. So I agree with you. We have to have the information to make a real, honest decision.
Is there a motion?
So I would move to-
Continue.
Continue this until such time staff has further information on the, the time-
Should probably pick a date certain-
-manner.
So that we don't have to renotice. Three weeks?
No. Hopefully October 3rd?
Oh, October 3rd, which is three weeks, four weeks.
Are you here October 3rd?
Oh, it is, huh?
We have a full council?
Yeah.
We have, we have a full council, yes. Is there a second, so?
They don't notice.
Yes.
Is that enough time, Mr. Platt? I mean, before we dump this on staff?
Thank you for asking.
Do you need more time? Because I, I don't think we're in a ru, this isn't a rush.
Yeah, for, for the Mills Act, the, the only timeline for the Mills Act is that the contract has to be written, signed by the city manager, signed by the owner, and recorded with the county by the end of December. If you gave us a little more time, just because research is inherently a little, we don't know where it's going to take us, we could, I'd, I'd appreciate a little additional time, and we'd still have enough, but if you'd rather hear it sooner, I'm sure we could make it happen as best we could.
First week of November? Would that work?
Sure, yeah. That would be...
Or? I'm just concerned of, of making sure it does get recorded in time, so I think November-
Mid-October.
And I know we're not going to have a full council in, for a period in October, and so we're kind of hitting and missing. So why don't we set dates certain for November, like you said, and then we'll just all, everyone will do their, their dead-level best to get it done.
First week of November, so they will have enough time to-
I mean, yeah, dealing with the county from time to time can, you know, but I'm sure the homeowner is, is able, if, if this does come to pass, they'll be able to, to take care of their documentation. So first week of November.
We are lucky in this case-
We are lucky in this case that the owner has the blueprints for the house. They're actually framed on the wall, so we'll be able to refer to those. We'll look at the actual wall itself. We could also review what happened with the fence ordinance and talk to building and safety about if the wall were removed, what would they then need there, if that would help you make your decision. So there are a few steps that we'll take to look into it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
This is to move it to November date certain.
Yes.
Council, and it was moved by Councilmember Najarian, seconded by Agajanian. Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Mayor Garpethian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And city manager, may I refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
One card, Mr. Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Garpethian and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Council members, after the Labor Day weekend fires in the hills of Glendale and Los Angeles City, everyone in the community appreciated the dedicated and hard work of our fire and police departments. They were the heroes of the moment. Like a seasoned politician, Councilman Najarian couldn't wait to heap praises on our safety personnel. Mr. Najarian wanted everyone to know that we cannot spend enough money in order to have the best employee that money can buy. Councilman Najarian was playing to the heartstrings of a frightened community that just experienced one of the worst fires in L.A. City. Mr. Najarian shocked the viewing audience by his language. His bullying tactics were reminiscent of another bully councilman. His name was Councilman Dave Weaver. And he also smirked, just like you, Councilman Najarian. Raising his voice with full body language, Mr. Najarian criticized and belittled the nonpartisan, nonprofit citizen group, Glendale Coalition for a Better Government. Mr. Najarian stated, "We need to continue transferring $20 million a year from Glendale Water and Power to the General Fund in order to have the best employees that money can buy." Under the leadership of the late Professor Jervis Avos, the coalition won two lawsuits against the city for these illegal practices. The Glendale Coalition for a Better Government, a group of concerned citizens, was established in 2013 because council members like Mr. Najarian kept illegally raising GWP water and electric rates beyond the cost of delivery. The utility rate increases were used to pay for police and firefighters' salary and retirement pension benefits and not to maintain Glendale water power services. Mr. Najarian has never explained why GWP utility users were being singled out to pay for the best employees that money can buy and not doing it legally as a tax on the general public. Councilman Najarian doesn't care that he and council's actions have violated the city charter and California state laws by raising utility rates and transferring GWP utility money into the pockets of our Calproud Union workforce of firefighters and police officers. For 13 years, Councilman Najarian has never taken the responsibility of the financial crisis we are facing. Unsustainable salaries and unsustainable, unfunded retirement pension benefits for our safety officers. Neither has his powerful supporters, the police and firefighters' union bosses. Mr. Najarian and the union bosses want to drain all the city resources, even if these actions could lead to selling historic city assets or filing for bankruptcy. Councilman Najarian, you're heroes. Police officers and firefighters should step up to the plate and admit their union bosses' action of 1999, which created our current financial crisis, were wrong. Yes, the financial crisis, which changed the way safety personnel were compensated. Having special people after 30 years of service being able to retire at age 50 from the previous 55 and then receive not 75% of their last year's salary prior to 1999, but 90% of their last year's salary as their new retirement pension for life was the legalized crime of the century. Thank you. Now, on another note, about four weeks ago, we discussed the Americana and the billboard and the financing of the Americana. May I ask, Mayor Garpethian, when is this action going to be brought back to council? Public would like to know, why are we not making any money on the Americana? We know that Mr. Caruso is making a lot of money, but we're not making any money. What action has this council done? It's been four weeks. We were told it was going to be brought back to council for discussion as an agenda item. Four weeks, and here we are, nothing. Inquiring minds would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. What's next on the agenda?
If there's no new business or any other business, there's just a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Your adjourn.